Order, this is the city of Hendersonville regularly scheduled planning board meeting on nine twelve of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, first item is approval of the agenda. There had been a request to move item B to the end of the meeting. Everybody's okay with that?
What's that?
To item C, I'm sorry. Yeah. So B goes to C and C goes to B.
Okay.
That's okay. We'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Changes. We have a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Fine.
Any opposed? Good. Next item is the minutes from our August eighth meeting. Hopefully everybody had a chance to read those and go over them.
Of course.
Looking for a motion there.
Going to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
From Peter, second.
A second, Mr. Peter again.
Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That also passes. Under old business, we have, uh, we have nothing. And under new business, the first item is a rezoning for a conditional zoning district for Hendersonville Connections. And Mr. Manley. Welcome city staff, um, board members, and then members of the public who, who we got here. We got an invite from the press. Okay. You're with? The lightning, very good. They'll be speaking. Okay, on the, on the first item. Okay. You folks?
Hendersonville Connections.
Hendersonville Connections. Okay, great. And on this item, I think there was a request for a recusal from Tamara. So we need a motion. Um, she is the architect of record on the project. So she's asked to be refused.
Make a motion to recuse this camera in this particular item.
I believe I'm assigned a second of meetings today.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're, we've been duly refused. Okay.
Yeah, but it's okay. Uh, keep an eye on that too, because we got people coming in. I think we do have some people online that, for this item as well, but. So this is.
Welcome, welcome to the folks online, too. I forgot about them.
So this is a, uh, an application to, um, uh, renovate a portion of an existing building off of, uh, Brooklyn Avenue. Um, not far from Spartanburg Highway, uh, shown in this vicinity map and in red right here. Um, it includes four parcels. It's currently zone C two C Z D. And this would be a modification of that C Z D to add the use of day center. So the portion of the building being converted, uh, would be for, uh, the purposes of a day center. That's being referred to as the Hendersonville Connections Center. Uh, to give you some, uh, insights on the site itself, the upper left picture is a front view of the church. Uh, that's currently housed in this building, uh, large metal warehouse type building. Uh, the bottom left is the rear of that building, and it also shows the northern, um, boundary and property line edge. The upper right picture is the eastern boundary. So the, um, this picture is taken, uh, just to the right of the front of the, um, of the church and is looking north. Up along, uh, the property line, the eastern property line. There's a mobile home park to the right in that picture. Uh, again, the church is to the left and existing parking lot to the left. The bottom right picture is from, um, France, is it, uh, Florence? What is the name? Florence Street, looking, uh, you can see the front of the church in the very far background. Um, you can see a neighboring duplex, the edge of a neighboring duplex here. Um, you see an existing four foot tall wooden picket fence here. And then as you get back to this existing parking lot area here, there's a six foot tall vinyl fence right there. There's some existing, uh, plants. Really not very maintained or, uh, just kind of a tree line along that boundary, the edge of the property. And then you see this six foot tall wooden fence here. That is actually part of the neighboring property's, uh, privacy fence. It wraps around the entire, uh, duplex. And so if you take a look at the site, just to get oriented again, this is the duplex. It is wrapped in fencing around here. Um, the application is, uh, because there's, they're not adding to the building footprint. Really, the only change is that they're formalizing some of the existing parking that's in the gravel area. And they're proposing, uh, significant amount of landscaping in order to, uh, achieve the, uh, intent of some relatively new, um, uh, code changes that were implemented this year related to buffering between this day center use and neighboring residential uses. And so, uh, there are a number of points on this site plan where those standards are, are being asked to be reduced. Uh, due to, uh, site constraints, existing vegetation, existing fencing, uh, things of that nature. Um, and I've got all the conditions and, uh, what's proposed listed out on, uh, some slides that are coming up. Uh, but I'll point out a couple of other things here. We've got a, uh, sewer easement that runs, uh, from the road back this way and makes an L shaping and continues on north. And in that particular sewer easement, no trees can be planted. So that impacts those areas in green. Um, another, uh, constraint is on this side. This came from some advice from the tree board. Uh, that beside the building here, between the property line and the building, there's also a, an existing sidewalk. So there's very limited space for large canopy trees. So there's been a reduction in the, uh, number of total trees and the type of trees. Instead of doing large canopy trees, they're proposing medium canopy trees. And then where they have space, uh, they've gone back up to the large canopy trees. And they've actually tried to squeeze in some more medium trees to, to really fill in this spot here. Down here, you have some existing parking, and so there's a small strip between a four foot picket fence and a six foot vinyl fence. Uh, but they have no plantings proposed there. In this case, you have an entrance drive coming in that, um, is coming in at an angle. And as that, uh, space widens out, they've got, uh, larger, uh, plants and shrubs proposed, but where it narrows down and does not provide the fifteen foot required buffer. Um, they have less plantings shown. Uh, similarly here, uh, there's existing, they're trying to maintain some existing parking spaces here. And so, um, that parking is within the required fifteen foot buffer. So they've got no plantings shown, uh, at the pinch points with that, but they're squeezing in some planting where they can. And then mid, medium trees again here in this kind of, uh, you know, space between the, the, uh, existing church building and the existing wood fence. And then only shrubs up here, uh, in the sewer easement section. Um, they are also proposing to utilize rather than a six foot fence, uh, they're proposing to utilize, um, the, the, the existing neighbors' fence to meet their, uh, vertical, um, uh, six foot fence or wall requirement. Um, the only other places where the fence would, would not be standard. So they have standard fencing here. They would have removable sections of fence right here. Uh, and then they would continue their fence all the way down, new fencing all the way down to get to this point where they're proposing to utilize that existing four foot fence and six foot vinyl fencing. The language in some of the conditions, uh, does refer to, um, six foot masonry wood or barrier of equal opacity. So there's been some discussion that if they could find some alternative that was, you know, uh, better price, um, provided the same vertical barrier. But, uh, was easier to maintain or did not have to be replaced as often as potentially wood might be. They wanted to leave those options open. So that's the way they've, uh, phrased it in their conditions. The, uh, standards in the zoning ordinance call for, um, it to be masonry or wood fence. And as you go through all this, you can see where they've asked for some reductions in the number of plantings or the planting of medium trees instead of large canopy trees. Planting of fewer shrubs and, uh, and, and that type of thing in each, each side, each section of buffer, uh, that's on the site. So that's the exterior of the site. And then as it wraps around that duplex as well, I mean, those, uh, those proposals are shown here on this slide as well. So it's a lot of details, but it, um, it essentially, uh, comes down to, uh, some reductions that make some sense, uh, based on some of the site constraints. And then what staff, uh, staff's understanding is that some reductions in the number of overall plantings of things like shrubs in locations in order to reduce some of the expense related to landscaping for this use. So this site plan was, um, just to go over a couple more, um, comments. We did not, staff did not have any, um, specific conditions for this. Uh, any of the comments from our other, uh, review partners from our D R C have all been resolved or, or will be at final site plan. Um, and it was not reviewed by our transportation consultant. We did have a neighborhood compatibility meeting for this on July sixth. Uh, we had a few folks from the neighborhood come out. They had some questions about access, about the, the impact of zoning, um, if this, uh, C Z D zoning was going to start to permit other types of, uh, commercial uses into the neighborhood. Traffic impacts, things of that nature. Taking a look at the, uh, the current land use and zoning map here, you can see, um, the existing C Z D, the yellow, uh, hash overlay, uh, the, the surrounding R fifteen and the green. And single family uses. And then you've got the C three that accompanies, um, uh, Spartanburg Highway and flanks Spartanburg Highway. And then you've got the mobile home park that was mentioned located right here. Um, there's also a pallet manufacturer right here on the same, you know, on this Florence Street at the very end of Florence Street. This is an unopened right of way back here. Uh, so there's, this is really just a dead end at the end of that. The duplex that was mentioned is located right here and the site wraps around it. I'll just note that Florence Street is a local street. Brooklyn Avenue is a, uh, is a minor thoroughfare. And of course, you've got Greenville Highway on one end of Brooklyn and Spartanburg Highway on the other end, which is, are, are both major thoroughfares. And taking a look at the future land use, uh, subject property is split zoned on our map or split designated. Um, the medium intensity is shown in orange and the high intensity neighborhood is shown in brown. Um, I'm not sure why they split this parcel and the building, uh, between the two different designations. Because the majority of the site is high intensity neighborhood, uh, staff mainly prior, uh, prioritize that designation and, and looked at, um, our analysis of the comprehensive plan through the lens of it being high intensity neighborhood. And we've got some notes in our motion to make that clear that going forward, it should be considered high intensity neighborhood. So that brings us to our, um, our six criteria for rezoning. Uh, the first one is the comprehensive plan consistency. Um, and, uh, I mentioned that in the split zoning there, um, the high intensity neighborhood has a secondary recommended land use of public and institutional uses, which, um, it's staff's opinion that this proposed day center would be categorized as, um, such a use. Uh, the site is designated as priority infill area in the growth management map. Compatible infill development supported by the population and housing chapter as well. Um, and compatibility, as it states in that chapter, is achieved to the use of landscape buffering. So we got that here. Uh, there were not super relevant goals and strategies from the natural environmental resources. There aren't any, um, uh, there's no changes to the building footprint. There's no existing tree canopy loss. There's only new, uh, plantings coming in. Uh, the next chapters, uh, cultural and historic resources chapter, there were no, uh, the community facilities chapter. None of those had any relevant, um, strategies, water resources, and only some minor references in the transportation and circuit, circulation plan. So looking at the second criteria, uh, which is compatibility, in this case, uh, there is a mix of residential, institutional, and intense commercial uses in the vicinity of the project. Uh, taking a look at the changed conditions, I've got some quotes here from, uh, a grant application for Hendersonville Connections, which, uh, makes their case, uh, for the changed conditions, uh, refers to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, it's become clear that most residents who require assistance from social service agencies don't have just one need. Their needs are often complex, far reaching and revealed over time with the wide geographic distribution of critical services across our community and the lack of reliable and convenient mass transportation. The connection center will be an answer to reducing barriers to accessing necessary services. And they go on to talk about, uh, includes some quotes under public interest. Uh, it says the following, um, I'm sorry, the connection center will be a beautiful welcoming space where clients can go to address many needs in one location, including access to staff from multiple social service organizations. A central location for classes, groups, and services, access to necessary personal care for clients such as showers, laundry, storage, healthy snacks, and mail drop. Drop in computer and Wi-Fi access to enable online submissions of applications for housing, jobs, and other services, substance use disorder recovery groups in a peer living room. And under five, under public facilities. Uh, this property is already being served by city services, uh, water, sewer, police, fire, and public works. Uh, the sixth criteria is effect on natural environment. As I mentioned, um, they're not removing any trees and they're proposing to plant thirty-five new large to medium sized canopy trees. And so with this, uh, staff, uh, developed a comprehensive, comprehensive plan consistency statement as shown on the screen, and it specifically references strategy from the public housing related to landscape buffering. And then we've got a couple of points of rationale for approval as well as a rationale for denial. And, um, uh, opened up to any questions. I've also got the motion here, uh, should anybody need to reference that in the slides.
All right. Do we have any questions for city staff? Go ahead, Peter.
Comment, and this is maybe a little off the wall. I sold that duplex in the middle, middle of that complex while back, and we had nothing but problems with pallet people. Nothing but problems. Have they raised any concerns or any issues about traffic or anything else over this?
Uh, uh, no, it hasn't really come up that I've heard.
My own. What do they do there? They manufacture pallet?
Yeah, they make pallets and stack them all up in front yard and, and right across.
So they make new pallets? Are they refurbishing old ones or?
I don't know whether they actually make them. I think they refurbish them, but there was huge stacks of pallets all the time.
Right.
And truck, you know, trucks and trailers and stuff like that coming and going all the time.
A lot of industrial type traffic.
I, yeah, I had heard that it was, uh, maybe a, a concern of the neighborhood. And when I was there on my site visit, which is one, you know, moment in time, uh, it wasn't that bad. There was not, it didn't look quite as, as in disarray as I had, uh, had heard, but you know, that could have changed right after I left for all I know. So.
Back at this, this project wraps around the duplex on the other side. That didn't exist before. Oh, the, the transport, they could transport around the duplex and to go to the church on the backside of Florence. Pallet was on the left, drive around the back, but now they, looks like they own that piece of property.
The church.
The church did.
Yeah.
Duplex owns a slice of it, but then the church owns the rest.
That's correct.
Which may have eliminated some of the issues, so.
I got three, Matt.
Okay.
Um, did I catch you correctly in saying that the applicant is proposing to use part of a neighbor's fence to satisfy buffering requirements? So there, there are quite a lot of details in the, um,
I thought I caught everything, but.
In, in some of the variations between our standards and what they're proposing, um, at each buffer point.
What happens if the neighbor decides to take that fence down?
Then, then there would be no fence. Cause the fence would have been taken down.
And a no contingency plan, no requirement that?
Nothing in their conditions as stated.
Okay. Second question, and I'm glad you're on this page, parking requirements. Uh, where am I going to here? Page ten on the packet that came out last week. Uh, parking requirements, let's see, were listed as ten required, uh, required for the day center and sixty-seven for the church?
Yes.
Um, it strikes me that neither one of those will have opening hours that conflict. The compatibility meeting indicated that the new facility would be generally eight in the morning to four in the afternoon, five days a week. Not when the church is operating. So do we really? Is the requirement really seventy-seven or will it really be sixty-seven minimum requirement?
They could do, uh, would be sixty-seven, but they could do a shared use agreement.
Well, if they did share use, yeah.
If they did share use, then it would be, it would be fifty-seven.
Okay, thank you. Uh, third one. See, these are easy. Um, near the end, the list of uses, let's see, I have page thirty-five of the packet. I need something explained, please. Um, this goes down to, uh, oh, what the heck form is it? The petition, page, uh, four, three, the four of the petition, I'm sorry. List of requested uses. Um, the last three words in the requested use, you know, conference rooms, break room, et cetera, communal living area. What does that mean?
But, uh, ask the applicant about that one.
It didn't jump up at, to staff at all or jump out?
Uh, we, as our understanding, there's no residential component to this.
But they seem to be asking for one.
Uh, okay, it's not in what we've got listed is, as far as uses that are permitted within the city. We've got the, um, language in the motion to be day center and religious institution as the only two uses.
The day center.
Day center would include services kind of wrapped in under that.
The day center by definition only operate between certain hours, if I remember correctly.
Uh, I'll have to double check. If you have the zoning code there.
Seven to six or something in there.
Yeah, I think it was eight AM to six PM or something like that. Six AM to six PM.
So that those three words would be irrelevant, null and void.
Unless they were included in the motion. But it would have to be phrased in a way that worked with our zoning ordinance. If, if they want to have residential dwelling there, they would have to have, that would have to be the use residential. My understanding communal living area to me was like, uh, a, a space to sit and watch.
Like a living room with a TV or.
Right. I think of a hostel, something in that.
We can ask the applicant and we can get clarification.
Okay, that's it.
So what you did bring up, uh, you asked some questions that brought up some key things that I want to make sure are understood. Um, I think I went over this, but this, this would be utilization of existing fence, six foot tall existing fence on a neighboring property. So if the fence came down, there would be no fence. Um, and then down here, it's our understanding that the four foot tall picket fence is owned by the church, is on the church property. Um, but it is, it does have sections of it that are pretty bad disrepair. There's pickets that are falling, that type of thing. Looks, it's very aged, weathered. Um, and so it, it, it definitely needs work and repair if it's going to hang around and, and serve as a vertical barrier there instead of a required six foot fence or wall. Uh, and then the vinyl, uh, also had some disrepair, uh, but it's also not a complete. It, it is just kind of a standalone barrier at the end of the, of the existing parking lot. And there's a gap between the two. So I just want to, the condition of the fence that they're proposing to utilize in lieu of a new fence. I wanted to make sure that was clear that there was, uh, some concerns about the, the state of repair of that four foot fence.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll ask the applicant to come forward then. We're going to limit, um, we're going to limit the applicant's presentation to ten minutes today. Hope we could try and do that. Um, let us know what you're proposing and any thoughts you have. Go ahead.
Sure. My name is Rachel Ingram. I'm the executive director for Hendersonville Connection Center. This is Kristen Martin. She's the executive director of Thrive, and she's also on the board of the Hendersonville Connection Center. Uh, Matt did such a terrific job. We don't have much more to add beyond what he's already presented here. I did want to speak to the question about the communal living area. Um, that's a D H S definition, um, for a peer support living room. So that's one of our partner organizations. Hope Coalition provides those types of services. It's a space where people can gather to do like community support groups, classes, and things like that. And the day center will only be open between the hours of six AM and six PM. There will be no overnight or residential facilities within it. Um, if you have any questions for us, we're definitely glad to answer those, but thank you so much for considering the proposal.
New question?
Surprisingly.
Yes, ma'am. Sure. Absolutely. So this is a model that is across the state, um, and across the country, really. It's a resource hub for people who are experiencing any type of barrier or hardship in their life. So that may look like food insecurity, housing instability, um, childcare needs, they want to advance their education, things like that, all types of social services. So we're partnering with organizations like Thrive and others who already offer these types of services here in Henderson County. We're trying to centralize them so remove those isolated silos for people who need more than one thing. So they can go to one building and get all of their needs met there. You can do a lot of warm handoffs, have someone greeting at the door. What can we help you with? What do you need? What are your challenges? And personally walk them to that office and introduce them to that person and bridge that gap and build those connections. So that's really the vision of the center is just to try to meet needs more efficiently and effectively in a really welcoming and calm environment. Sure. So the Hendersonville Connection Center itself will have myself as the only full-time staff member. We'll look at adding in two part-time members once open to man that front desk and to help facilitate those services. The partner organizations will all provide their own staff members. Some of them may be there Monday through Friday all the time that we're open and they'll lease an office and that will be their designated spot. And others may do a rotating basis. So some of the smaller service providers here like Piscilegal, they may come just on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then in that same space on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, maybe a different provider. And so the only true staff members that will belong to this specific agency will be myself and two other part-time members. Sure. So we do have the free clinics and also Blue Ridge Health are committed partners with this project. And so they'll be offering services. And like I said, they may come in on a rotating basis. We haven't gotten to the nitty gritty of like nailing down what the different schedules will be for each provider. And I think they're kind of waiting to see what the timeline will be and what their capacity is at that time. Um, but we're definitely looking for ways that we'll be able to grow in the future and continue to offer more and better services over time.
So Hendersonville Connections is currently an, an operating nonprofit in the community?
Sure. So we're a DBA. We took over the Joseph's Outreach Ministry license or nonprofit status, not license. Um, so Joseph's Outreach Ministry was formerly a day center over on Seventh Avenue many years ago. Um, a group of people knew that that was shutting down and they felt really passionate about continuing to offer those services to those people. And so they've been working to try to reopen a center. Um, and that's kind of the next step in that process. We do have our status. Um, we are operating as in I'm getting paid to be a staff member, but we're not currently offering these services yet.
So do you feel, I don't know how to ask this properly. So with these services being provided and your clients may or may not be without a place to stay at night. And the place to stay at night is over on this side of town. How, how do you, where, where, what is transportation going to look like? Have you, have you thought about that?
Absolutely. A large portion of our clients likely will be unhoused. Um, but there are already those people living here in this community, right? There will be awesome people who will need services who won't be out unhoused, who may just be lower income, elderly, disabled, and things like that, who could benefit from the services. So some of our clients will have somewhere to go, will have transportation, um, may take public transportation to get there or to bike over. There won't be anyone staying on site overnight. Um, and if needed, in the future, we would hire staff or a staff security member or contract out security to ensure that that's not a problem. Um, I think one of the benefits of having it in this proximity to the religious institution is that we're also going to be managing our relationship with them. And so the church is also going to be saying, hey, we can't have people sleeping on our sidewalk on Sunday mornings when folks are coming in to church, right? And so that's one consideration that we're already, we already have a vested interest in. We're not going to be able to have people over there over the weekend and to say, well, we're not open. We're not worried about it. I'm off duty. That's not going to be the case because we're sharing this parcel of land with a religious institution who does offer weekend activities. Um, and so if needed, we would provide security services or contract out security to services to ensure that that doesn't become an issue.
I may add to, we also, um, have an ongoing consultation with the Sheriff's Department and Hendersonville City Police Department, um, to address any security concerns. They've looked.
Um, to address any security concerns. They've looked at the site plans. They've actually given us plans for security cameras and things of that nature. Um, and then thrive right now is our largest homeless provider and we don't have, uh, anybody sleeping on any of our properties. Um, and so it's all about establishing, um, the protocols with our folks as soon as we're. As soon as we engage in services, um, so that that's actually not an issue, um, although I, we understand why people might think it would be an issue.
Yes, no. Follow up to that. I don't, I'm not sure you really addressed Jim's question. I didn't perceive that your question was about security on the premises. It was more.
About getting back and forth.
Yeah, you have twelve clients who don't have a place to sleep tonight. What do you do with them?
At six PM, at six PM, what happened?
Yeah, I didn't hear an answer to that aspect of it.
Well, I did from the bicycles and.
If they have transportation.
An apple country.
And we all know how well the, uh, um, a service here.
Yeah, will transit be serving the site?
Uh, so there's, um, a bus stop both on Greenville Highway and as well as on, um, Spartanburg Highway. And we won't have staff leave without, you know, making sure everybody has gotten to where they need to go. I, I would tell you that many of these folks don't go to the rescue mission. They don't actually need. To be transported across the county back to the shelter. Um, so we would be helping, helping them locate if they needed to. But a majority of them find where they're going, like I said, even from my office, I don't have to transport anybody at five o'clock. Um, they've already made their way to where they want to go. Um, so I'm not sure if that answers that question a little bit more through.
Yeah, I think it would.
And I'll just add the intersection of Spartanburg Highway and Brooklyn Avenue is a quarter mile from the subject property. So it's.
And that's served by.
That's a five minute walk.
That's served by Apple Country.
Uh, nearby, there's a bus stop nearby.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, we're going to open up public comments. Um, if anybody in the room wishes to speak about the project. Um, please come forward and give us your name and address. And, uh.
Hello, my name is Dennis Bro. I work for Peacock Architects. Uh, I would just like to, um, first of all, thank Matt. He did a great job. And I'd also like to thank, um, Kristen, Rachel, who also did a very good job. I just want to, um. Add, uh, if I comment to something that Matt said, there was some comments about the fencing, uh, might not be adequate. Um, Kristen and Rachel and Hendersonville Connections Organization is more than happy to replace any fence that. Does not meet the current standards or what would be an acceptable standards, or if in the future, um, one of the neighbors. Decides to take their fence down, they'd be more than happy to replace that fence at their cost. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll, uh, take a look at the Zoom participants. If there's anybody that wishes to make comments, use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you.
No hands raised.
No hands raised? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments and, uh, have a discussion internally. What are you thinking, Peter?
She solved the problem with how to make them aware that there is a problem with pallet company has, and I'm sure they've already experienced it. And it looks like it should be a nice addition to the neighborhood. I'm good.
Anybody else have thoughts?
Brad, can we, can we make the requirement to replace the fence around the duplex a condition? If that fence goes away for some reason, because it, it should be a requirement normally. They have a fence that, they have a fence on this property that bringing it from the duplex.
Duplex.
We're going to allow them to use that fence to meet that requirement, which is still required.
So it's a, it's a really good question. So it's conditional zoning. Can we place a condition that that fence could be used for now, but if I, if it goes into disrepair or is taken down? Ten years down the road, how would anybody remember that it was a condition of this? Development.
That, that fence was put up by the owner, the previous owner of the duplex. And it's been maintained as far as I know to, you know, good extent, so. It's private.
I guess that's a question for either Lou or Matt.
Yeah, so any condition that was on the, uh. Ordinance that approved the rezoning would carry with the property. Would we as a community development department automatically know if that built, that fence had deteriorated? Not, not necessarily, but if we were to receive a call from the duplex and they said, you know, this fence fell down. I can see the adjacent property, we would be able to do a zoning enforcement action based on the approved, um, project. So. Um, you know, that fence would go back, uh, should somebody bring it to our attention or should we become aware of it in any, anyway? Um, so again, conditions have to be agreed upon, but you, you can certainly recommend that as an additional. Condition that hasn't been, and it sounded just based on his commentary that they wouldn't be opposed.
It sounds like it's not necessary because it's, it would be covered by the ordinance.
Well, not only if it's in there as a condition. Um, so unless.
I think they would be required to maintain the, the new fencing, I think to specifically, uh. To, to ensure that, okay, we're going to allow you to use existing fencing. If that fencing goes away. Deteriorates, it's removed or becomes damaged. It is on the owner of the subject property to replace that fence. Whereas their new fencing that's going to go up has to be maintained. If it comes down by ordnance, by zoning code. They would have to maintain that six foot vertical barrier. So we could, we could easily point at that and say they didn't maintain that. If all we have that allows them to utilize existing fencing is a condition that says they can utilize the existing fence, but we don't have a. A plan for replacement if it's damaged or removed, it could get a little bit sticky, sticky, gray.
Even though there's an ordinance in place that says it's required.
Yeah, because you've got the, the conditions in a CZD that. In some cases.
Okay.
Supersedes zoning codes.
Yeah, but basically the condition is allowing them to use the other fence. So. By establishing that condition, you're removing the base level requirement.
Because it just doesn't make sense to have two fences back to back now, but in the future, it would need to be replaced.
We have to think three directors down the road and two property owners down the road on the duplex. So it's not.
I, I think if the condition included that can use that as the fence, but that it must be maintained by the. Property owner. By the, by the property owner of the parcel as long as the use is in place.
Can we go back to the, the, the photo that shows the four photos, um, one including the existing fencing? Yeah, that one. So does anybody have any thoughts about the four foot high fence that's in disrepair when there's a six foot high? Solid fence required.
Should be replaced.
That's kind of where I was going with that and. And it needs to, I think the fencing needs to be consistent too. In other words, we've got, you know, wood stockade. Fencing stained, kind of like a cedar stain, then we have.
It's a duplex.
That's part of the duplex, right? That's the one, that's the inner. Inner part of that U. And then we have this, you know, four foot high, kind of a shadow box fence, because the. The pickets are on opposite sides of the, and it's kind of in disrepair. And then we have white vinyl stockade fence panels.
How, how do you word that as a condition?
So. For the four foot fence, th- they're requesting a condition that that be allowed to be used. You could just. Say you don't recommend agreeing to that condition and that will trigger compliance with the zoning ordinance, which would be. A replacement fence.
A six foot tall.
Wooden or masonry.
Right.
That's right.
So that, that would handle the four foot is just by saying we don't agree to that condition using that fence.
Right.
Um, the six foot. That's existing, that's on the adjacent property is, is kind of what we were talking about before.
Right.
So I've, I've got some language, uh, that you could consider if you're, if it addresses your concerns. Um, and this would just be a catchall utilization of any existing or new fencing shall be repaired or replaced. Uh, by the property owner if removed or damaged or deteriorated. Uh, you probably don't need two Oars, but something to that effect.
Okay. And then the other, the other, um, provisions that they were asking for was. Some relief from the, the buffering.
Yeah.
On the plantings and, and in most cases it makes a lot of sense because there's just not enough room for that many plants.
That's the thing that's bothering me. Um, on this whole proposal, we went through. A zoning text amendment a few months ago. I supported it in committee. I supported it in this forum. Um, knowing that something like this would be coming down the board. Uh, coming down the pike, sorry, but, uh, makes it many metaphors here. Um. Now we're being asked to pull back even on those reduced requirements. Uh, that bothers me. Uh, I understand the problems with the site, but it still bothers me that we, it would represent pulling back twice. It particularly bothers me. That we're replacing large canopy trees with medium canopy and small canopy. Um, at a time where here comes my parking lot question, Matt. They're proposing a third more spaces than the minimum required. They're proposing ninety. They only need sixty-seven. It strikes me that if we're going to concede on the borders. Let's benefit the environment, hold down the, uh, heat islands, et cetera. Are we working this and putting some large canopy trees in place of some of those parking spaces? Um, yeah, that kind of retrenching is really.
Have you been to the property and seen?
I have. Yes, thank you. It's a good question.
So, uh, some of the reduction from large canopy trees to medium canopy trees came as, um, out of guidance from the tree board.
Mm-hmm. I'm looking at the tree board recommendation.
Yeah, so that's where some of that came. And then where they have plenty of sufficient room and no existing vegetation, they've put in some larger trees and medium trees. Um, and then where there's, uh. Another spot where.
Large canopy trees should be planted elsewhere in the site, such as in common open space areas. I'm thinking parts of the parking lot.
So. So this northern border is another spot where they're utilizing existing vegetation completely right here. But even in this section, they've got, well, they've got a section that's, uh, sewer easement where there's no trees. Then they've got some medium trees planted and I believe the reduction in the canopy. Uh, trees there is because they are utilizing some other existing vegetation. Um, and so, um. They're. Basically a combination of several things going on between, uh, utilization of existing fencing. Constraints with existing parking lot or driveways. Um. And, you know, space between the property line and, and the building edge. So that they've got a, uh, they've got some rationale for the reductions and, and some of the canopy size. I mean, this section right here has got medium trees. My assumption is that's because, you know, again, of just a tight space. Um, between the church building and the, the back of the duplex property line. Um. But other than that, there's a pretty good rationale or, you know. Logic for where they have the reduction. They did not want to plant larger trees as a tree ward stated in the common space. Because they want to utilize this, the ones for a playground, others for like. I think, um, like picnic or some kind of gatherings out in front of the church. Uh, so they want to have that filled with, um. With trees, maybe they're planting a garden there actually. Uh, I think they wanted to, to not have shade for a garden. Um, and then as far as the, the changes to the zoning text amendment. Um. You know, those were put in place, they applied to the whole city. Um, and I don't know that they had gotten into a site plan at the time that they were form, they were. Petitioning for the text amendment. And so getting into the details of site and site design led to some. Uh, requests for relief, uh, from some of the standards.
So the, 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 the parking lot at the bottom of the drawing here of the site plan is existing.
That's correct.
But the parking lot top left.
Is gravel.
Gravel. But it doesn't seem like it's quite that large. And to Neil's point, it seems like the parking lot. At the top of the site plan is going to be utilized more by the day center. Whereas the one that's existing at the bottom is going to be utilized more by the church.
That's correct.
So you'll have, you'll have some staff members there, maybe some volunteers. I mean, how many, how many parking lots do you really need? I, I, I kind of see what Neil is saying there.
But there's not a, um, applicant, you know, present from the church. Uh, I don't know if, uh. If.
The church feels like that would be like an overflow area for Sundays. Okay.
Essentially. I mean, this is a minimum parking requirement. It's not a maximum parking requirement for the. So they're responding to that.
My point is that the extra spaces provide some ways to relieve, um. The vegetation, um, dispute.
So they've got room on their site. That's essentially conducive to parking. So they're converting that to parking and, uh, the position is that. You know, drop some of those parking spaces and put in a tree or two.
Just doing a quick count, it looks like maybe forty something sites or parking spots back there. And again, I imagine that's overflow for Sundays.
Well. Is it? If they don't need it now, is it truly overflow?
I don't know. I don't know. There's nobody here from the church, right?
This is gravel. These are gravel lots that people are parking in.
Right, currently, right. And how, how many large canopy trees were required and how many are proposed? I think part of it too, Neil, was the expense. Um, we're talking about a nonprofit here.
We are.
Trying to, um, you know, make this work.
Excuse me, Jim.
Go ahead, sir.
Um. Required buffer is fifteen foot type B buffer, which is equal to, um, one hundred linear feet. Uh, for, which includes four canopy trees, fifteen evergreen shrubs and thirty-three flowering shrubs.
So questions having to be, uh. Linear feet around the site, is there? I have. Requested the information on the site plan, I don't think it's on here. Required number of canopy trees versus proposed.
Are you looking for a total perimeter? Let me see if I can get that.
But there's not going to be removal of any trees whatsoever, correct? So the parking lot's not get, the gravel parking lot is not getting extended and removing trees.
That's correct.
Okay.
She's working on it right now.
I mean, I, 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 how, how much of it was, you know? Actually, uh, we don't have space for this or it doesn't make sense because there's not enough area for it. And how much was it? You know, this is an expensive landscaping project. Anybody, can anybody? Sure, come on up. Um, we're just having a discussion here.
Yeah, so the intent is that HCC will purchase that, that last section from the church. Um, but we'll have a agreement with the church that will have shared usage for the parking lot. And we'll also share in those costs. So like, for example, that front area that you mentioned, I think Matt might have said like it was a garden. It's just the front church's lawn. So we're, I mean, the church doesn't want an additional tree there, so we weren't going to. Put a tree there, but, um, if there are other. I mean, Dennis and Peacock folks are better able to tell you as far as. Um, what was proposed and if you could actually have one there or not, that's definitely not our area of expertise. Yes, we are a poor nonprofit that other nonprofits are currently supporting. Um, and we also have, um, a lot of grants that are out there. We have construction grants and things like that, that we're just waiting. We didn't want to get too far down the road to all of our zoning pieces were accomplished. Um, so. I think that, you know, if, if there are issues, if there really is room for something, you know, then we can. Talk through that, but as far as some of that, like where, and I don't have your like fancy clicker there, um, there actually is.
Should be on the top button on that.
Okay, is that like the spotlight thing? Okay, this is the coolest thing ever, you guys. Um, so see, poor nonprofit, we don't know about tech. Um, so this part right here is currently a gravel driveway between the front. Um, so this part right here is currently a gravel driveway between the front parking lot and the back parking lot. So you can see we're even adding a buffer there that like.
So the two parking lots will not be connected any longer?
Right, um, that with the shrubbery there, that's not what that's showing you.
So currently they're connected and you're going to close that connection with.
That's what the shrubbery is telling you.
The buffer against the duplex. Uh, and currently there are zero canopy trees.
Because that, yeah, there's no canopy, that's a, that, all that right there, that line is a gravel. Lot that you, it's difficult to navigate that you drive through.
Okay.
Is that in one of those pictures, Matt? I don't know if you can, I don't know if that helps. Uh, explain, or if that makes it even more complicated? Yeah.
My coworker is currently trying to get that information, I will go into uh, detail here, um, if we first look at the um. Uh, the north buffer, okay, for the north buffer, uh, there is the sewer easement where no trees are planted. There are forty-two shrubs per linear foot. Um, removing fencing proposed for access, preserving a hundred and fifty-two feet of back foliage, which is this right up here. Again, this is the sewer easement right here, this L-shaped right here. And we're preserving this right here. Um, masonry wood or equal opacity option still to be placed in this area, remaining areas have three medium trees, ten evergreen shrubs, eighteen flowering shrubs per linear feet. Masonry wood or equal op- opacity option to be placed in this area. Next is the east buffer, which is along the back here. And I want to uh, just point out, there's a sidewalk right here, existing right now, there is a walkway, there's a door into the building. East buffer buffer first hundred and fifty feet on the south provides four large canopy trees right here. Four medium trees and four evergreen shrubs per linear foot, the remaining buffer to the north has an existing concrete wa- existing concrete walkway proposed to be kept, that's what I just mentioned right there. To be kept, each side of the path is lined with floor for maximum screening, outer edge provides three medium trees, ten evergreen shrubs and fourteen flowering shrubs per one hundred linear feet. A seven-foot buffer is proposed around the northeast proposed patio with eight. Foot-high fence instead of required six-foot fence to exceed, to exceed the standards of privacy screening.
We've got all that information here on the screen, um. We did just do a quick calculation, it's um, approximately sixty large canopy trees are required uh, per code. Um, for this uh, site, the linear feet of this site. Uh, they are proposing nine large canopy trees and twenty-six medium trees. So where some of that gap is, is um. Where you have the existing vegetation, where you have the sewer easements, where you have the existing parking lot and some other small areas of constraints. Um, that are where there's no trees being planted. And then you have site constraints related to what uh, uh, Mr. Bro was discussing as far as there being limited space. And it where it's being reduced from large to medium canopy trees. I'll also note that they initially submitted two options, one to wrap the use. Rather than the site to try and reduce the amount of landscaping. And so really just trying to wrap the building in landscaping, it ended up that. It really didn't reduce the landscaping more than putting it around the perimeter. And our zoning code says that buffers will be placed at the property boundary, the property edge. And so that proposal went away, but it does highlight the fact that this is a split use. And that the use of the day center is at the rear of this building. Um, and then the front of the building will be maintained for the church use, so. Um, it's worth noting that there are, you know, some nuances to this, it's not just one big large day center that's. Going to be wrapped uh, uh, in buffering, so. And obviously retrofitting a landscaping buffer into an existing site that's got buildings and pavement and. Easements and other constraints and existing vegetation and fences. So it looks like, I think Mo is on the line. Mo, did you have something to add? You want to introduce yourself, name and address?
Hi, um, I'm Mo, I work with uh, Peacock Architects, um, I I think you you pretty much covered what I was uh, about to say about the existing conditions. Um, and a couple hundred of of that feed are entry to the uh, existing paved drive and our our gravel lot there and back as well as the. The sewer easements and the existing foliage, we also um, have. The tighter space on uh, the east side and and the south side where there is existing. Uh, pavement that we have to account for, where we can't place these larger canopy trees. Um, and and we're also trying to to save our our client um. A little bit of money, you know, they're a nonprofit, so we wanted to propose some smaller, some smaller trees in the back where we already have a lot of. Foliage in that right of way behind the property. So we we figured it was a a bit redundant to to have more plantings there where you have uh. Almost a forested area in in the back, so it's already buffered from those neighboring properties as well.
Thank you. That. Answer your question, or at least have some discussion regarding. You still think the parking lot could be reduced and add some large canopy trees?
I don't think they've done an adequate job of trying to. Meet the guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, how much does a large canopy tree cost?
Mo, did you have any calculations based on your research for difference in cost between medium and large canopy trees?
I think, for me, the the primary driver wasn't cost, the primary driver is the site itself.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
So. I I don't think the cost of a tree changes the site.
Right.
You're going from zero canopy trees to canopy trees.
Right.
Like forty.
Well, they're thirty-five, thirty-five, sorry.
I mean, I'm counting one, two, three, four, five.
There's nine canopy trees and twenty-six medium trees.
About a a grand for per canopy tree uh, for uh. See. Fifty fifty feet canopy tree, fifty foot canopy tree.
Fifty foot canopy tree.
At a grand a piece.
Wow.
It'll take some time to get there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we uh. Probably looking at a motion at this point.
Are you going to add the condition or are you going to take something out of it?
Personally, I I think we have consensus on the 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 fence needs to be. Around the perimeter. And consistent. And the the existing needs to be replaced.
If I read it, will you add the condition?
I can try and help with it, and and we'll we'll get, we'll get staff to help us make sure we get it.
Do you want to see if they'll agree to the condition on the duplex fencing so that you can go to city council as an agreed condition? So if we if we want to do the condition for them to be on the hook for replacing a duplex fencing.
If it goes away.
If it goes away.
Or becomes disrepair.
Can we ask them if that's agreeable so we can do it as an agreed condition instead of?
Yes, you, they can, that looks like they're saying.
And then the 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 existing fence that was proposed to be utilized. Um. Are you willing to replace that with new fencing?
Yeah, the four foot.
The four foot. For four foot, yeah. But then we don't want to, we don't want a vinyl fence for thirty feet in the middle of. In other words.
It needs to be consistent.
I think that's where, like, that's the churches, the vinyl fences, the churches, and so like I said, if we achieve zoning, then we are able to purchase that back part of the building, we'll enter into um, like an uh. HOA is the right word for that. The two businesses, what is that called?
Shared use.
Thank you, shared use, uh, a shared use agreement so that we will share cost for making that all look appropriate, just like the same what what you're going to do for the roofing, et cetera, so. If it's their vinyl fence and we need to have everything match up, that will be a part of our shared use agreement with them, and one, and we have three of their um, members on our board.
So to clarify, the city standard is masonry or wood.
Six foot.
Six foot masonry wood, vertical barrier. That's opaque, um, no more than ten percent transparency. They have in their condition included or a barrier of equal opacity, um. So they're, they're proposing that. That vertical barrier be um, have some options to it. Other than wood or masonry. So if not comfortable with that, or um. Uh, you know, you don't want to see vinyl. Or. Some other type of fencing, then uh, you would need to. Recommend that that portion of the condition.
No, what we need to do is recommend that they. Pretty much stick to the ordinance on the fencing. Okay. That's easy enough, thank you. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I'll read it and then you add what you want to add.
Sure.
Yes. Suggested motions. For re- recommending approval. I move planning board recommends city council adopt an ordinance, meaning the official zoning map of the city of Hendersonville. Changing the zoning designation of the subject property, it's pins nine, five, seven, eight, dash, two, one. Dash, four, six, nine, nine, comma, nine, five, seven, eight, dash, two, one, dash, four, nine, two, four, comma, nine, five, seven, eight, dash. Two, one, dash, five, six, fourteen. Comma, nine, five, seven, eight, dash, twenty-one, dash, five, eight, six, eight. From C dash, two, dash, CZD, secondary business conditional zoning district. C dash, two, dash, CZD, secondary business conditional zoning district. Based on the site plan and list of conditions submitted by and agreed to by the applicant dated September, what? First, two thousand twenty-two, and presented at this meeting and subject to the following. Number one, development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained herein, therein, and the following permitted uses, permitted uses. One, day center, two, religious institution. Or uh, do I need to include the permanent amendments?
Yes.
Okay. For amendments to uses or conditions discussed and agreed upon in the council meeting between city and developer. And not yet, not yet represented on the site plan, please use the following language, disregard number two, if not needed.
That's not part of the motion, that's your instructions.
Okay.
Your motion will start up with number two.
Number.
Permitted uses.
Permitted uses.
Okay, number two.
Conditions, thank you.
Number two, permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include. Number three, the petition is found to be.
You want to include the conditions at this point.
Yes.
And this is what we just talked about, yeah, utilization of existing fence shall be. Conditioned to be repaired or replaced by the property owner if removed, damaged, or deteriorated, and that's only the fence around the duplex though.
That's the picture on duplex.
Right.
And the four foot fence, the vinyl, if any, any use of different fence. Would have to be replaced.
Existing fence.
Okay, and new fencing will meet the city standards for day centers, which is water masonry, six foot high. Gotcha. Yep.
The condition it is today. The only other question that did get ironed out, but if that's. Everyone's okay with that, and it would have to be. It would have to be.
It would have to be replaced because it says, it says new fencing will meet city standards for day centers, utilization of existing shall be conditioned to be replaced. Prepared, replaced by the property owner, removed, damaged, deteriorated, or does not meet current. City standards.
Okay, so the four foot.
So the four foot would have to come out then.
These standards, six, six.
Their condition states that they're going to utilize.
Yeah, and and that's, that's what we're. We're having trouble with.
Why?
It's only four foot.
I think they're agreeing to the removal of the fourth foot. So we can make this condition like you were saying, or.
I think this captures what you're attempting to do because it specifically references deteriorated um. That you're clarifying further.
Yep. But you could repair it. And we don't want it repaired because it's only four foot high.
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay.
This third item may be tackles.
There you go.
Concerns that.
Four foot existing fence shall be replaced to meet city standards for day centers. Okay, good.
The three goes away.
No, you guys are lying.
Okay.
So did y'all read all three?
No, I haven't read three yet.
Have you read the three conditions on the screen?
Up here, up here, Peter.
Okay, I'm sorry. The development shall be consistent with the site plan, including the list of applicable conditions contained.
No, you're on number two.
Number two.
And then one, two, three under that.
Got you. Make sure I can see it, okay, permitted uses and applicable conditions presented on the site plan shall be amended to include. One, utilization of existing fence shall be conditioned to be repaired or replaced by the property owner if removed and damaged or deteriorated. Two, new fencing will meet city standards for daycare centers, for day centers, day centers. Number three, four foot existing fence shall be replaced and meet city standards for day centers. Okay? Number three and four, okay, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information and the staff. From the staff analysis and because. The high intensity neighborhood future land use designation recommends public and institutional uses as a secondary recommended land use. Compatibility achieved through the implementation of landscape buffers per strategy PH one point one period. Number four, furthermore, we find this condition to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information from the staff analysis, public hearing, and because, one. The proposed use will provide a need to the undeserved, un- underserved in the community. Number two, the proposed use will be made compatible through the implementation of landscape buffers. Okay?
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion so Neil doesn't get too tired.
We do have a a second, do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five to one, so the motion passes. Thank you, and we can get um. Guess we need a motion to uh, allow Tamara to return to the room.
Make a motion to allow Tamara to return to the room, pick up business.
Yep, and do we have a second to that?
Second.
Allow Tamara, thank you, thank you, uh. Laura, and uh, we'll vote on that.
All in favor?
I, any opposed, okay, Amber may return, oh, she heard us. Nobody was opposed, nobody was opposed to you returning, so that's good, right?
Not out loud anywhere, uh, unlike when John had to recuse himself.
Oh, really? Nobody wanted to come back, so uh, we we moved C to B, so this is a zoning text amendment for parking standards in C one. Which was discussed by the legislative committee, I think, already.
Twice.
Twice.
Uh, so this is another application, uh, actually from Tamara Peacock, uh.
I could stay, right, or do I have to be?
Uh, I I would think that you would have to recuse yourself again, actually, probably should have taken the night off.
Yep. I move that we recuse uh, Ms. Peacock from consideration of this next time.
You need to get your clients on savor.
All right.
All right.
You know what I'm. Hey, see, don't worry about.
We'll get a beer. Yeah, the only other thing is the.
This one better not be as long as the last one.
Yeah.
So. The um, this application is um. To address parking minimums in the C one district, the that was the petition initially was to just eliminate the. Minimum parking requirements in the C one. The uh, proposal from staff is actually to reduce the parking in the C one and the PRD. Uh, zoning districts, and so it's it's changed a little bit from what um, the petition is for versus what staff is recommending, what the committee is recommending. Uh, the map shown here is from two thousand thirteen, uh, shows a parking uh, survey of parking spaces downtown. There's a a a large number of public parking spaces available within the C one zoning district, and of course, the Fifth Avenue um, parking deck will be available soon. In comparing our C one uh, parking requirements with other other zoning districts. Um, this chart really lays it out for you, so one, currently. Uh, in the C one, if you have a residential development with more than five units, you're required to provide one and a half parking spaces per unit. There uh, the only. There uh the only other zoning district where one and a half spaces per unit is required is our P R D planned residential development zoning district. All other residential and mixed use um zoning districts have a a minimal requirement of one space per unit up until you get to uh units that have three bedrooms or more, then it it ticks up to one and a half uh parking spaces per unit. So our standards in C one and P R D exceed those of the rest of our uh zoning districts. See, one in particular uh is in our most walkable a area of town um where you may see, if you're living and and have residential units, you're going to see a potential reduction in the need to um to own a car or to utilize a car on a regular basis. The C one is shown in orange in the center, so you have an idea of specifically where um these proposed changes would occur geographically. As mentioned, legislative committee met originally met on this uh back in July, and we brought it back in August with some additional considerations. Um primarily, uh the concept of a fee in lieu of parking was something that was really important. There was some general support for a complete elimination uh from the committee to completely eliminate uh the parking minimums in downtown. That is the current um standard in our Seventh Avenue district. There are no parking minimums within the Seventh Avenue M S D, which we're going to talk about that area a little bit later on. So no, no parking minimums in the Seventh Avenue M S D Municipal Service District. But we we did have parking requirements in the C one only for residential uses that are above five units or more. But we did have that that those minimum parking standards. We do have those minimum parking standards. If they're eliminated, then there's no parking standards. But the concept of a fee in lieu of parking is uh designed to provide some flexibility um for providing some parking or paying into a fund that the city's parking enterprise fund to offset uh any providing, any parking that is not provided, any required parking that's not provided by a development. So that those fees would go in and and help generate revenue to the city. The city can then use that revenue to continue to provide public parking, consolidated parking, things like the parking uh garage um that uh better utilizes space and uh puts parking in in uh strategic locations that can serve the entire district rather than each um building having its own dedicated surface parking lot. Um and those, if if surface parking lots are scattered out throughout the whole downtown, it can break up the urban form, take away from the walkability um and really become more of an automobile centric uh district. And so utilizing public parking and consolidated parking uh helps achieve the the vision for the district. The way the fee in lieu would work if a new development uh condos uh in an existing building uh in downtown uh wanted to be developed and they had enough room out back to provide five parking spaces, but they had uh ten units and required to have ten parking spaces. Um then they could provide those five and they could offset the other five that they couldn't provide by paying a fee. Let's say it's five thousand dollars per parking space. They pay that fee twenty-five thousand dollars to um. Is that right? But yeah, uh to the city and then the city again uses those those funds to continue to provide public parking. The developer in this case would get um the flexibility to continue with their project without having to meet the minimum parking requirements. Um so that idea of a fee in lieu of parking uh has has been favorable to the folks that um have discussed it on the committee. Uh and I think some of the folks in the downtown, on the downtown uh Economic Vitality Committee as well. Um and so there's, there's been a desire to reduce the minimum parking rather than eliminate it completely because once it's eliminated, you could no longer do the fee in lieu uh concept. So I mentioned the downtown advisory economic vitality committee. They they also uh supported this reduction in parking uh minimums and it looks like this. So this is our current code, as I mentioned, for residential under five, six, three, one. For residential developments containing five or more dwelling units, off-street parking of one and one-half spaces per dwelling unit shall be provided. Um and you'll see in there that non-residential and residential containing fewer than five units have no parking minimum requirements. The proposed language was would be um that for non-residential developments and residential developments, no off-street parking is required. That's what was proposed uh by the applicant. And the committee and staff are recommending these changes here. That instead of, instead of it being one and a half spaces per unit, that'd be reduced down to one space per unit. So that leaves the potential for the fee in lieu of parking in play. Should we revisit that? Uh after the comprehensive plan, after the downtown master plan is put together, um we could, we can revisit that concept. It's not part of what we're proposing today or um or that would go forward to city council at this time. Uh but it is a concept we want to keep in mind as we make decisions today that could be impacted uh down the road. We've also got the, you know, while we're, we were evaluating parking minimums, uh we felt it was important important to align them across the zoning districts. And so there's also provision in here to reduce the P R D to one space per unit for one and two bedroom units. And then it would go up to one and a half spaces per unit for three or more bedroom uh uh units. And so we've got the P R D being modified as well here. And that would be reflected in the parking minimums table, you know, under section six, five as well. And so we primarily with this being a C one uh driven uh request, we took a look at the comprehensive plan, the downtown core section of that for uh to evaluate the comprehensive plan consistency. Uh the goal of the downtown core is to create a cohesive, well-defined urban campus for medical and educational uh institutions with supportive office service and residential uses that is integrated within downtown. Um it actually doesn't sound right. Does that sound right? Create a cohesive, well-defined urban campus for medical and that sounds like M I C. I've got it here. Maintain, enhance, and grow downtown as a vibrant, mixed-use gathering place and cultural center with an emphasis on retail arts and entertainment uses. Maintain a highly urban pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design. And then within that, you've got strategies related to creating a continuous street wall um that where buildings are adjacent to the sidewalk and having limited uh side parking and rear parking only. It also goes on to encourage infill development and redevelopment. Um by reducing the um requirements for parking, you're able to encourage uh development and redevelopment. And then we also have actions related to reviewing our zoning standards and revising as necessary to enable compatible infill projects and strategies that uh minimize negative impacts from growth and land use changes on existing land uses. So an overabundance of parking could be considered a negative impact from growth and development. Uh consider a full range of long, uh short and long-term impacts when reviewing zoning code changes and update the zoning code to ensure conformance with the comprehensive plan. Those are all strategies within the uh land use and uh development chapter. Uh so staff reviewing that finds that the reduction of parking minimums is consistent with the goals and recommended design guidelines from the comprehensive plan. Uh the population and housing chapter goes on to promote mixed uh land use patterns and compatible infill. Natural resources did not have uh specific um uh goals and strategies. Uh the cultural and historic resources chapter does include a strategy that states to support increased downtown housing and office density in order to to support retail uses and create a twenty-four hour environment. Uh the community facilities chapter and water resources chapter did not have any relevant goals and strategies. But we do um recognize that potential for uh reduction in stormwater runoff um from elimination of the um of new surface parking lots. Uh transportation and circulation chapter encourages mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development, uh encouraging bicycle parking at facilities at key destinations and incorporate zoning regulations that encourage shared parking and cross-access easements. From there, we took a look at our compatibility section. Um I'm sorry, our second criteria where we evaluate compatibility. Uh in this case, there's a significant amount of public and private parking spaces available within the C one. Uh reduction of minimum parking spaces requirements reduces the need for individually owned surface parking lots and promotes opportunities for infill development, which then supports the walkable urban form found in our C one district today. Um additionally, the proposals reduce the cost of residential development uh within the C one and the P R D zoning district. So bringing down some of the costs that's plaguing uh uh housing prices. The third criteria is change condition. Uh in this case, the additional residential development within the central business district is desired by the market and it serves as a tool for economic development. More residents you have within the district, um the better that is for the businesses in the district. Under public facilities, this is an urban location already well-served um by uh public facilities. We do have the Fifth Avenue parking deck that is nearing completion as well. Um and for P R D districts, this, as we know, they're required along thoroughfares uh for the most part. Um and so those thoroughfares are also, you know, highly urbanized corridors that are well-served by public facilities as well. And I mentioned this briefly, uh the sixth criteria, the effect on natural environment. Uh reduction in parking minimums can help reduce uh impervious surfaces, which reduces stormwater runoff. And so, sorry about that, skip that one. Um we developed a draft comprehensive plan and consistency statement. Uh that states the petition lines with goal L U dash ten of the land use and development chapter, which calls for maintaining a high, highly urban pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design. Um and so the the effect on the streetscape would be um this reduction in uh surface parking lots. And then this are state, those are um the rationale for approval is shown on the screen. There we've got a number of uh different uh benefits and uh considerations that would be considered for this uh type of proposal. And then uh a rationale for denial uh that it would place a burden on parking in downtown. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions, and I've got some motions available if needed.
Any questions? Go ahead.
That would strictly be for street parking?
That would be for private parking. So this is all.
Well, I think the question is where would the fund, the funds would go.
No, we're. I mean, what are we looking at for that parking? In other words, they pay the fee, but what, what, I mean, are we going to city going to design a separate lot for that? Or is that going to be like designated street parking for?
Yeah, no, so it would, it would basically give them the right to that, continue with their development without providing uh the the minimum number of parking spaces. That's what that fee would be for. And it would be utilized by the city in their their programming and uh provision of public parking downtown. So the developer would get the rights to be able to move forward. Um the tenants, the owners uh or tenants of the units themselves would then have to find their own arrangements for parking, whether they got one of the, in my example, one of the fives that was there or if they needed to get a uh a monthly permit from the city to have a space or they wanted to strike a deal with the bank across the street or the church across the street or have no car at all or whatever. They ride a bike everywhere. They can make their own decision. They can figure that out, but it would, they would not be using the fee in lieu of parking to buy a parking space. That was.
Now, the fee in lieu is not part of this proposal.
It is not part of this proposal, but it is uh, you know, has a kind of an impact on the perspective.
The money would go specifically to the parking enterprise fund.
That's correct.
Create more downtown parking. Okay, go ahead, Neil.
There is bookkeeping on that, is there not?
Yeah, there's, it's, it's, it's an existing fund right now.
Well, yeah, it's it's one that's being created along with the parking garage, but yes, so it will be. Um because all of the resources that are associated with the garage and the metered parking uh will be going into what's known as an enterprise fund. So.
Neil has a question about.
Yeah.
Um requirement.
You know, I'm all in on this, Matt. I'll vote in favor of whatever we as a group concoct tonight. One thing jumped out at me that didn't previously, P R D. Excuse me. Five dash one four. Excuse me, dash, six point seven, off-street parking. The end of the paragraph says all parking spaces. Again, I apologize.
You're good.
Parking spaces shall be located within seventy-five feet of the residential air unit they serve. Do we want to lengthen that or do we want to get rid of that?
Um.
Makes me a little bit restrictive perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, it came up under cottages at Mastermind. That was a pretty unique layout that they had. Um you know, when you, if you have general parking lots, um there's not assigned parking spaces. I mean, it 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 could be a little bit challenging. I wouldn't want to try and do that on the fly tonight, but we can, something we can look at.
Maybe when you look at the park, the fee in lieu.
We'll see if it comes up. I mean, one thing we'd like to try to do with these amendments is uh if we start to see a recurring theme or uh a district that's where something is not working correctly, we we try to get a couple of good examples and say, all right, we're we're seeing this over and over. We need to address this. And so cottages, one good example with this particular um issue, um but we've done a lot of P R D over the last year and it hasn't, hasn't been a recurring issue as of yet, but we can look at.
So the changes we're talking about today are only to see one?
And P R D.
And P R D, and we're talking about changing it from one and a half to one.
In both cases.
No matter how many bedrooms.
Yeah.
Got you.
Uh no, in the P R D, it would go up to one and a half.
One and a half.
Three bedrooms.
Okay, for three or more.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it takes it from from currently being one and a half for one and then bumping up to two units for a three or more bedroom. We're taking that down a half space for both under, you know, for under three bedrooms, it's one space. Or if you have three or more bedrooms, it's one and a half spaces. So going from one and a half down to one and from two down to one and a half.
Like you mentioned earlier, C one seems like it's probably the most walkable district.
It's.
Why do you think the requirement years ago was one and a half as opposed to one in other areas? What, what?
Probably a perceived parking issue or perception that um you know, we've had some discussions about um you know, perceptions about how many people own cars and what the household arrangements are for our ownership and and things like that, but I I can't, I don't, I can only speculate.
Perhaps it was a, you know, a parking problem downtown at one time.
It's always been a parking.
A lot of it is perception.
What, what else do we charge fee and lose for? Sidewalks and anything else?
Uh we've talked about uh trees. Um we have uh dedication to public land, a fee in lieu of dedication of public land in our subdivision ordinance.
Large subdivision.
Yeah.
So so currently it's sidewalks and that uh fee in lieu for dedication of public.
Those are the two things we have.
The two requirements that are currently in the ordinance.
So a large subdivision can either provide land for.
Yeah, what is it, over thirty?
Yeah, if they don't have land that's meets, because there's standards for what that public land needs to meet. They can't meet those standards or don't have the land. They can, if you, I don't know what the rate is.
Got you. All right. Any other questions?
It's it's based on post-development taxable value, though.
How close does the C one boundary correspond with the M S D boundary?
Oh, I'm 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 sure it's got little, little nuanced differences. I don't have the M S D on here.
C one's a little bit bigger than the M S D itself.
It is. M S D is a perfect rectangle from Seventh to Allen, church to King. So it it expand, it extends beyond the M S D.
Okay, that's my thought.
Any other question? Okay, uh would the applicant like to? No, okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. This is a zoning text amendment, so we will open up public comments uh if anybody in the room would like to speak. Or if anybody on the Zoom call would like to speak, go ahead and use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you.
Mister Fitch would like to.
All right.
Ken, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. Increased residential density generates a need for additional parking. And the reduction of a minimal requirement will inevitably affect the district as overflow. As overflow residential parking would reduce availability for residents and visitors entering the area of. The area for commercial activity or civic uses. The reality is that new housing will often, often contain market rate multi-bedroom units. That would have more than one vehicle. There is a mention of centrally located consolidated parking locations. But what is the capacity of these locations to address multiple uses? Including new additional residential use that would be in proximity to the residents. Because we, that these locations are not. Throughout the area. We must also realize that much of the available parking will be metered. And thus not compatible with residential uses without the appearance of that urban phenomena of. Planning the day around parking the car. There's also thus a greater potential for overflow residential use. To occupy spaces essential for commercial activity, especially small businesses. One does shudder to think this. But with an increase in density and less required parking. How soon would our parking deck become inadequate in its capacity? I think this is a complex issue and we, we do not know what the future is going to bring in terms of how. All our new parking is going to um, function. The proposal includes a change in minimum parking requirements for PRD. As you have heard so very often in the consideration of these PRD projects, there is much public concern. About the inadequacy of the current minimum where two-car households seem inevitable. And this reduction would certainly intensify that issue going forward. This issue should be a separate consideration and ideally remain site-specific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Any other uh, folks on the Zoom call that would like to speak, use the raise your hand feature and we'll unmute you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Um, I will, I will um, speak to Mr. Fitch's comments uh, real quickly. We, in our discussion at the Legislative Committee, we talked about parking being market-driven. In other words. I've got a condo, I want to rent it, it's in the C one district, but it comes with zero spots. Well, if I've got a car, I'm probably not going to rent that condo. Or buy that condo, but. So being market-driven, we felt like, you know, if it's, if it's a. A condo that's got two spots and I've got a car, then I might consider that condo, but if it comes with zero spots and I have a car, I probably won't consider it. And I think that discussion. Is, is worth having because let it be market-driven. We actually in the, in the committee meeting talked about making it zero. And then this fee and lieu thing came up, which we also thought was a great idea. So if we make it zero, then hey, there's no requirement. How are you going to charge a fee in lieu? So that's, that's where we landed on one.
The other big thing, when you look downtown. And realistically, this is only going to apply to anything new. Where is something new going to go? That's going to be five or more units. That is not going to more than likely be multi-level and probably have parking on the bottom. Um, or underground. Trying to think, five, five-unit buildings downtown existing, pretty much the skyline and a couple of really small apartments and a, well, there's more than you think. Cause there's, there's the ones over the, at Fifth and Main has five apartments upstairs. The one uh, above Los Casuelas has six apartments upstairs. Um. But I, I see it as only applying to new construction and I think that's an okay, I think, I think you're market-driven for new construction is your fault.
I'm concerned about the commercial impact as a business owner downtown. It is hard to find parking for my customers to find parking. Once a week, there's a, a large gripe about it and it's challenging.
So parking behind your building off backside of church?
I have one and a half spots.
That's where that half a spot came in. Sure.
For the people who have.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. So in other words, if we allow um. If we push residential parking to utilize the same spots as the commercial, then we're taking away from that.
And it goes back to like you're saying, how are the condo owners going to make money if they're not going to rent out the cars, but how do we make money when it's raining? And they can't find a parking spot, so they go somewhere else.
Parking garage.
Parking garage will help with that.
Big time.
I mean, big time. In the long run, an ideal solution too is to uh. Put some pressure, individual pressure, city pressure, whatever, to start using church parking lots during the week when they're totally unutilized.
Yeah, there isn't on South Main.
Yeah.
That the parking lot is empty.
Yeah.
Sixth Avenue.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there is a relief valve there. I'm not going to say we can fix it overnight. The parking is there though.
Matter of marketing.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I think that the, the, the whole thing was, it was very inconsistent and whereas, you know, the, the most walkable district had the biggest, the largest parking required. We're not talking about eliminating it, we're taking it from one and a half to one. Any other discussion, comments?
I think as somebody who lives downtown and has a business downtown, it makes sense. Um, residents aren't going with the commercial spaces anyway. Um, especially as the changes come into effect with the new parking regimen, regime of. Neither can afford it. Um, when I had extra cars above and beyond, we had the Skyline Building. I went on the other side of King Street to unrestricted parking spaces. I didn't go to a commercial spot in the C one. Um, because then you have to move your car every three hours. As Mr. Fitch alluded to, you learn. Uh, I mean, I learned right away that I could park at three, three o'clock in the afternoon and move at eleven o'clock in the morning and be with, you know, meet my three-hour requirement, but. I think it makes sense.
What makes sense?
The, the, this, this change makes sense.
Okay, do we have uh, do we have a proposed motion? Then we would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah, Fred.
I'll find it.
It's up on the board for you if you want.
Oh, look at that. I can read that. I move planning board recommends city council adopt an ordinance admitting the official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance, Article five. Zoning District Classifications, Section five dash six dash three point one. And Section five dash fourteen dash six point seven and Article six, General Provisions, Section six point five. Off-street parking standards based on the recommendation, the recommended modifications to the petition as presented by staff and based on the following. One, the petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information. From the staff analysis and the public hearing and because the petition aligns with goal LU dash ten of the land use and development chapter, which calls for maintaining a highly urban. Pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design.
Okay, we have a motion.
Right, I'll go ahead. Uh, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing and because. Yeah, I guess we need all those. Um, the staff recommendation aligns the minimum parking requirements for the C one and PRD zoning districts with the other residential and mixed-use parking standards. The staff recommendation reduces development costs and restrictions for residential development in downtown and along thoroughfares. Residential development and utilization of underutilized properties within these areas is designed. A significant amount of public and private parking spaces are available within the C one zoning district. Reduction of minimum parking space requirements reduces the need for individually owned surface parking lots. And centrally located consolidated parking locations are preferred over individually owned surface parking lots as a means of protecting and advancing walkability. And better utilizing land within the downtown core.
Well said.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There you go. Peter seconded. Any discussion? Quite a bit of discussion running.
We did, yes.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six to zero motion pass.
Good job.
Okay, multifamily in the Seventh Avenue MSD.
Yes, this item, uh, we have an application um, for this zoning text amendment from Mr. Dan Mock. Uh, this would impact the uh, the portion of the C two zoning district that is within. Uh, the Seventh Avenue Municipal Service District. Um, so to do my best with this, that the C two zoning district is a zoning district, the secondary business zoning district is found in a couple of different key locations in the city. C two zoning district does not permit multifamily as a use by right. The only portion of the C two that allows for multifamily uses today is located in the Seventh Avenue Depot, his National Register Historic District. Which is in this blue outline, so the yellow parcels within the light blue outline. Are, is the only part of the city that's zoned C two that allows multifamily uses. The proposal is to expand. Multifamily uses to the C two, the portions of the city that are zoned C two that are within the Seventh Avenue MSD. So the Seventh Avenue MSD covers, um, it has three zoning districts in it, has CMU, C two, and I one. Um, the I one and the CMU are not impacted by this, just the C two. Okay, uh, so that the applicant in particular, the two green parcels in green are under contract. And they are outside of the National Register District, but they're inside the MSD. He has a desire to utilize those properties for multifamily, utilizing existing buildings. Uh, so that's the basis for the, the proposal. So, you know, I went into detail in the staff report about the number of parcels in each district. I think what I just told you is summed up well on this map. We can refer back to this map as if we have questions. Uh, taking a look at the existing conditions, uh, upper left is a picture of the Seventh Avenue Depot National Register Historic District, so that. Core area right there in Seventh Avenue, um, further to the west. As you move to the east down the Seventh Avenue corridor, the character changes slightly. The bottom-left picture is a uh, you know, an urban storefront, uh, building brought up right next to the sidewalk. Uh, commercial use, uh, bottom right picture, you know, similar and building right up at the street edge. Uh, but then you also have vacant lots, uh, like the one in the upper right. Uh, you start to get into some residential uses, single-family homes. Uh, you've got the multifamily, um. On. Got some more people. On the upper left is the, the multifamily, um, associated with Green Meadows. Uh, you've got some automobile, um, services like found in the upper right picture. Um, and then you've got, so one of the bottom-left pictures, one of the structures that the applicant um, is looking to purchase to have. Um, some residential units in there on both floors and then that blue building as well. These are both kind of cinder block buildings. Um, there, that is the other property. Here's one of them and here's one of them. Uh, down closer to Mud Creek where the greenway is. And so there's change in character along this corridor. Uh, Legislative Committee met uh, to discuss this one as well. Um. The, the big part of the discussion that came out of this was related to maintaining the ground floor. On the Seventh Avenue side, fronting Seventh Avenue ground floor, that's some portion of that be retained for non-residential uses. So the idea that this would be a mixed-use corridor, um, with a vibrant, uh. Um, pedestrian experience, a uh, a street where there's a lot of interaction. Uh, maybe some transparency at the storefront, uh, that makes it interesting, uh, and inviting place to be. And so wanting to maintain that character is, is really important for achieving the long-term vision of this corridor. And so that was a healthy discussion was had on that and how important it is uh, with the decisions that are made related to. Expansion of multifamily uses. Uh, Downtown Advisory, uh, Economic Vitality Committee also met and discussed this last week. They, they, they concurred and were generally supportive uh, with um, the recommendations and I'll, I'll get into what those details are. The current language is as follows, there's four standards, these are supplementary standards, so if you're um. In the C two zoning district, uh, you can have multifamily in that zoning district if you meet these supplementary standards. That's what it says under C two. You get to these standards and it says the property must be within the Seventh Avenue Depot National Register Historic District. So most of the C two is then eliminated from multifamily use. Uh, they may be permitted only on the second floor. Multifamily dwellings may only be permitted on the second floor, should be no maximum density, but a minimum dwelling size of four hundred square feet. And that multifamily dwellings must be occupied by three or more families living independently of each other. The applicant has proposed to change those slightly. The first one would change, it would strike the National Register Historic District and then put in the MSD, the Municipal Service District, so it would expand. From that little blue area to the red outline area, but only for those parcels in this, that are zoned C two. And he's proposed to strike that multifamily dwellings may only be permitted on the second floor. Um, and then just renumber the other, um, the other two standards. So that, and looking at this, staff has evaluated it and come up with the, um, the following proposal. Uh, staff and the committee both uh, concur that the expansion of the multifamily use to the MSD uh, is suitable and compatible uh, with the area. Um, with some consideration given to item B, multifamily dwellings may only be permitted on upper floors, so striking second. We have a three-story building, uh, you wouldn't want multifamily only on the second floor and then commercial on the third floor. Um, so upper floors would permit multifamily dwellings. Uh, but only within the Seventh Avenue Depot, so that, that main intersection and cluster, first couple of blocks of Seventh Avenue. A hundred percent multifamily is only permitted on, on the upper floors. That's, that's what this reads. If you're in uh, this, this Seventh Avenue MSD and outside of the National Register District. You shall primarily reserve the ground floor space along Seventh Avenue street frontage for non-residential uses. Alternatively, ground floor residential dwellings may be permitted as an accessory use in the following circumstances. So size, number one, a maximum of fifty percent of square footage on the ground floor may be utilized for residential uses. So you, so. To, to primarily reserve the ground floor space for non-residential uses, you cap the residential use on a ground floor at fifty percent. Um, access is limited to um, points to the ground or upper. Or residential spaces may be located at any point on the front side or rear of a building, which may include an access point adjacent to any ground floor, non-residential space along the primary street frontage. You can have access. From, from any side of the building, but your frontage, ground floor residential dwellings may front upon an alley. And or private or non-street public spaces under the following circumstances, notwithstanding any building code provisions. Frontage upon private property shall include a permanent access easement to the closest public right-of-way. So you could have access from uh, any side of the building, but the, it can only front to an alley or to um. Uh, you know, a, uh, uh, parking space or, you know, parking lot area, something like that. It can't. Front on a street. In this case, and this, this only applies if you're fronting along Seventh Avenue. That's, that's in the beginning of, of item C here. So. There's a lot of moving parts here, um, but the, I think the intent is clear that um, we're trying to preserve that ground floor. Seventh Avenue facing space for uh, something other than residential. Um, that not only for the privacy concerns of the residents, but also for uh, the overall vibrancy of the corridor. Um, that not only for the privacy concerns of the residents, but also for uh, the overall vibrancy of the corridor. And then we've no change to the max, uh, to the, to no maximum density. And the four hundred square foot minimum, um, but then we've struck. The next one, multifamily dwellings must be occupied by three or more families living independently of each other. That is redundant. That is the definition of multifamily dwellings. It's found elsewhere in our code. Doesn't need to be restated here. Um, and then we've added, uh, the minimum front setback may be reduced to zero within the Seventh Avenue MSD. Any off-street parking provided shall be located to the side or rear of a building. So there are no minimum parking requirements in the Seventh Avenue MSD. Uh, but we're stating that um, if you choose to provide parking, you're going to place it to the side or rear of the building. And we're allowing uh, buildings to uh, to, to come all the way up to the front uh, setback. Uh, up to the, the property line in the front, uh, rather than having to set back. So those are the primary um, staff and committee recommended code changes. Um, as opposed to what has been provided by the applicant. There's also been some discussion about live work units. The applicant had brought this up. We had the language that we. Uh, have borrowed from for the, the uh. Providing the flexibility or, or the, the middle option is what I called it. Where you're allowing some residential on the ground floor, but you're not giving up all the ground floor space so that you can have retain some commercial uses. That language was borrowed, uh, primarily and along with that language was some. Uh, language that uh, specifically for live work units. We felt like this was a little bit unnecessary to add the specifics about a live work unit. Felt like you could still do a live work unit under this scenario. So we haven't proposed it to be included, but I did want to provide a slide in case the applicant was bring up that as a concern he has. Taking a look at the comprehensive plan consistency, uh, the, um, as one of the criteria for considering your, um, the text amendment. The downtown core and downtown support designations. Um, on the future land use map, which is what covers the Seventh Avenue MSD. I have the following goals, maintain, enhance and grow downtown as vibrant mixed-use gathering place and cultural center. With an emphasis on retail, arts and entertainment uses. Maintain a highly urban pedestrian-focused environment through building and streetscape design. The downtown support states support the downtown retail core and create a transition between downtown core and adjacent residential neighborhoods. Uh, both districts recommend multifamily and live work units as primary recommended land uses. And staff finds that multifamily uses are consistent with the goals and recommended land uses for these two designations. This chapter, Land Use and Development goes on, um, to encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas planned for high-density development. Uh, review zoning standards and revise as necessary to enable compatible infill projects. Uh, consider full range of short and long-term impacts and update the zoning code to ensure performance with the comp plan. Uh, population and housing, a chapter also has a few strategies that are relevant. One here allowing redevelopment and or reuse of single-family homes that directly front. On arterials into office or high-density residential uses with the future land use map in coordination with the future land use map. And encourage a wide range of housing types and price points in order to meet the diverse and evolving needs of current and future residents. The natural and natural environment. Natural and environmental resource chapter did not have any relevant goals. Uh, cultural and historic resources chapter did have a few. Uh, preserve the viability and into that individually, individuality. Of Hendersonville's historic neighborhoods in order to maintain their role in supporting community pride, livability and identity. Promote investment in, in adjacent to historic districts through compatible infill development. Particularly on underutilized, uh, currently underutilized nonhistoric properties. Uh, support increased downtown housing and office density in order to support retail uses and create a twenty-four-hour environment. Um, and then the other chapters did not um, have any points that were relevant to this. So looking at our next criteria compatibility, in this case, there are three components. Uh, the first is the proposed multifamily use. Seventh Avenue MSD contains a wide range of uses, including multifamily. Um, as well as the city's uh, being home to the city's farmer's market. Um, in regards to the sec- the, the provision of commercial uses on the ground floor. Uh, this provision is in place currently in the National Register District. Uh, this provision would remain in place in full in that historic district and. Uh, that's where mixed use is most likely to occur in the near term. Um, and then that provision would remain in part throughout the rest of the Seventh Avenue MSD on Seventh Avenue. Um, with the provision that was discussed. And then the reduction of setbacks. Currently, their minimal front setbacks are found in the MSD. A reduction in setbacks allows for greater flexibility and more efficient use, use of land. Uh, more walkable urban form is achieved by allowing for buildings to be brought closer to the street, form a street wall. And reducing minimum setbacks which allow for um, the shifting of parking to the rear of a lot. The third criteria is changed conditions. Uh, we've seen uh, redevelopment has uh, ramped up in this area. Uh, we, we um. We believe that will continue. We also are uh, well-versed in uh, the. The, the demand for housing and the undersupply of housing in our area. Uh, the fourth criteria is public interest. Again, taking a look at the uh, three main provisions. The expansion to multifamily would uh, permit additional density in a highly urbanized walkable location. Um, the provision for maintaining commercial uses helps to achieve the vision for Seventh Avenue corridor. And the reduction in uh, minimum setbacks provides greater flexibility for redevelopment. In the fifth criteria, the public facilities, um, this is uh, an. Urban location well-served by public facilities and um, there's uh, plans for streetscaping uh, along this corridor as well. And uh, no known or anticipated negative environmental impacts for item six. So with that, we've got a draft comprehensive plan as shown on the screen, comprehensive uh, plan consistency statement shown on the screen. And then rationale for approval, uh, as shown here, this is for, um, as presented by staff. Rationale for approval of the um. Staff recommendation and the committee recommendation, and then we've got some rationale for denial as well. And did you click on the screen? That's right. Any questions?
Can you go back to the, the, the slide that shows the actual district? Seems like it went good ways down.
You see the little green area right there where the train station is?
Yeah. Yeah, so the blue is the, is the historic depot district. Yeah, but then the. The MSD goes all the way down Seventh Avenue, it looks like. Almost to.
To the creek.
To the creek, to the, to the Oklahoah Trail. But that's all residential down there already, isn't it?
No. Well, there's.
Everything on the right side of the road going down is commercial.
Well, there's.
It's mixed.
So it really is block by block.
Go back into commercial, okay.
Really changes block by block.
I just wanted to see how far down it went.
Um, this commercial through here and then it starts to transition to residential. Through here and then it transitions back to kind of more intense commercial services, um, automobile. Uh, mechanics and uh, contractor, cut our construction trades and. Uh, things of that nature.
Love the auction. Okay, I just want to see how far down it went. Thank you. Any other question? Okay, we will, is the applicant on?
Yeah, I believe he's on Zoom.
If the applicant's on the Zoom call, we'll go ahead and um, we'll go ahead and unmute them. And just a reminder that we're keeping um, the applicant's presentation to ten minutes.
Dana.
Hi, everyone. How you doing, everybody?
Who we got?
This is Dan Mock. I'm the applicant.
Can you give your address real quick, Dan?
Yeah, it's uh, nine zero two and eight twenty, Seventh Avenue, uh, East.
And I've got your slides here if you need me to pull up.
Okay. Matt, just to clarify, is this a totally different board? Um, should I be going over what we went over last time or?
There are, um, the, there are members of the committee that you met with are on this board. Uh, but there's members of this board that have not um, heard your presentation.
Okay, I'll try to keep it short. Uh, basically, uh, my name is Dan Locke. My company is Rockwood Development. I'm a small developer uh, from Los Angeles. Uh, more particularly Los Feliz, uh, Silver Lake area where. It's probably known as the most hipster area in Hollywood and all of Los Angeles. Uh, very walkable. You walk out of my uh, house over there and on both. Both directions, whichever main street you get to, it's just a bunch of restaurants, bars, um. Essentially everything you need, uh, without getting in your car. Uh, some of these are past projects I've had, um, done. This first one is right down the street from my house too. And um, most of my residents, believe it or not, or not most of them, but some of my residents, believe it or not. Don't even own cars and they're in their forties. Uh, a lot of them in this particular building right here, they come from New York. Um, just because anything i- is considered large to them. Um, and this, this is, I never understood why. I had so many New Yorkers in my units until my broker told me that. It's probably the most comparable place in Los Angeles to like New York City where you can just walk out and, and um. Essentially take care of everything you need, uh, without getting in a car. So I've been buying some buildings here. My, um, we moved here because of COVID. Um, and since then, I've just been selling a lot of stuff in California and redeploying um, out here. And we've purchased, uh. Two buildings, well, I think we closed on nine oh two today, that baby blue building. I'm not exactly sure we were supposed to, but the seller is, hasn't signed a, a few documents or something. But essentially I've closed on two buildings. I'll close on that red one in probably three weeks and then. Um, the main building that I've purchased already is that uh, former Coca-Cola bottling plant that's on Locust. Um, not sure if you guys are familiar with that one, but it's um, right next to uh, the linen. Place and it's on the same block as Appalachian Brewery. Um, and then we'll be closing on another one, hopefully in October and November. Um, mid-block over there and then the last one just got in that scroll on is in Campobello, but that's South Carolina. Anyways, we love the Hendersonville area. Um, I've looked at everything from Greenville to Asheville. Um, and Hendersonville to me is. Right now is the closest thing to where. I saw Los Feliz was back twenty, you know, twenty, twenty-five years ago. Um, where it was up and coming. I'm not even really interested on Main Street because I think that's a different crowd. And that, i- it's, it's just a different vibe when you go there. I wanna. You know, market our places to the hipsters and I think this is a prime spot, the, the Seventh Avenue corridor is a prime so, uh, spot for the hipsters. And I, I know Lyle from Miami is doing a few re- uh, retail projects. Up over by the Chiskillian, the former Chiskillian building. Um, he's been doing a great job there and I would just see, love to see this place. Be more of like, have more of like a nightlife where. It's not dead and somewhere where you don't really want to be. Like my wife doesn't really want to be in this neighborhood after it gets dark right now at this moment. Uh, Main Street, she doesn't care so much, but if we can get some retail uses here. That kind of promotes that, um, that, that would be ideal. However, I think you need the residential first before the retail, because if you have the retail. And you don't have the residents that live in the area, you're not going to be able to. Get, attract them and, and retain them and, and have them stay and hang out. Um, uh. Like you would if, if they actually lived there, kind of like our neighborhood in Los Feliz in California. Um, the reason, I think, um. Down, especially at that bottom end where I'm buying those buildings, it's primarily, I broke it down last time, block by block. If you start over up there by, um, by the pizza place, which would be. Uh, Mark Grove Street and Locust, between there, that's your prime retail. That's where everything's getting done. But then as you shift down between Locust and Maple, um, you know, I think Lyle's per- uh, has purchased some stuff up there and he's, he's. Uh, has a flooring tenant coming in. Then you get over to Maple and Bark, uh, Barker Street, which uh, is where White Duck is. That's like, I think the last spot probably. Right now, if you ask me, where it's kind of. Like the cool area. Uh, once you pass that, it starts getting a little tired. You, uh, between Barker and Ash, you know, you, you've got. Uh, and Ash and Beach, as you start going down, you have this weird of like. Mix of like weird buildings, like Matt was saying, some look modern, kind of out of place. There are some really nice single-story red brick buildings, which I love though. Um, but once you get to like Cherry, um, even that Cava Bar, I love that, that's between Beach and Cherry. Um, love that building, um, but I, I think I've approached that seller or that owner. He owns a lot of stuff over there across the street, which I've made offers on, but we didn't get anywhere. Um, and then there's that vacant lot, but once you start getting the cherry. Everything really becomes residential right there because you have, um, what you guys call the projects over there, the low-income housing. To me, really, that looks like really nice housing, um, compared to certain parts in LA. But on the other side, right behind our buildings is all residential. Um, and I think once you pass those buildings on in escrow on, that starts getting into like automotive and. You know, definitely spot, uh, stuff that isn't going to draw like a, a night scene or anything like that. Um, I think being down that far, uh, I'm definitely early to the game. Um, taking a, a huge risk and the reason I was wanting to do more residential is because. At least with residential, I'm guaranteed that if I build it, I should be able to rent it out. But given the way.
You're, you're bumping up against your time here, if we could wrap it up.
Okay, but given, you know, where we're headed in this market and I think this market's going to crash. Um, retail and office, all that space is very scary to me. And I think you have a lot of retail and a lot of blocks, uh, to have. To improve before you get down, way down there, because if you had all retail down at the ground floor. I'm pretty sure it'll be vacant, like I wouldn't be able to attract anybody. Um, and lease it out and then, you know, these are all funded by me personally. I don't have investors in these. And it would just kill me to the point where I, I'd probably be out of Hendersonville and I have some pretty, you know, if you ask. Uh, the zoning guys over there, I've got some pretty good ideas, you know, for this area and with what I want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions for the applicant from the board?
I do.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you plan to condo any of these out or are these strictly going to be rentals?
No, they're just going to be multifamily. Um. Reason being is in California, I don't really, you know, I've started the condo process, uh, but never went through with it. Just because of the ten-year defect liability, where it used to be where everybody comes and sues you in year nine. Um, just before the ten years, but now in California, people are, the, the attorneys are knocking on your door in year two, year three. But I will build everything to condo spec and even better than condo spec.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. We'll go ahead and open public comments then. Since this is a zoning amendment. Anybody, um Mr. Fitch is raised. Okay, we'll unmute you. Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, Ken Fitch, ten forty-six Patton Street. Um for clarification, this is only in the C two zoned areas. I think that needs to be more clearly stated because there are statements that sound like it's the entire MSD. I I that's something I think that clarity I think is necessary uh going forward. I don't know if it's in the motion, but I think that's something that needs to be established because you have different zoning districts. And and Matt has stated, this is only C two, so I think that that's that's important. Um the 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 this uh proposal ha- uh refers to an existing building and properties under contract. And the applicant has shown us, you know, specific projects um that are generating the the need for the amendment. But I think going forward with this uh amendment beyond the specific properties and projects he's mentioning, um there is an issue that um you maybe have to address. Because if you have an increase in the number of multifamily projects in the district, the 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 issue may become parking. Because if you don't have an onsite parking issue, then you're gonna have increasing use of street parking. And that does create an issue in the future because there are commercial businesses and they'd be very sensitive to having that parking availability. And that's something that might become an issue if you have more of this development there without the provision of parking. I think that's something need to consider here. Uh there are mentions of compatibility. And the the issue of branding has been raised, and that's very relevant. And it's important to know what the proposed branding will be. For example, if we're about historic Seventh Avenue, then um definitions regarding creatively designed architecture become relevant. And and if if the new developments distinct would be modern and was gonna be historic Seventh Avenue. So I think that's something clarification. Now, of course, if this were CMU, you would have specific standards. So the question is, should some standards be desirable here? Because the terminology is is now subject to interpretation. Um so I I I think one of his photographs looked like, you know, uh an adaptive reuse, which was was quite wonderful here. But I think going forward, because this is going to be stated, you know, in the text, I think we have to, it has to be clear, knowing that more may come beyond the specific projects that we're hearing about. Um uh finally, um the question is, because we have the historic district, has there been consult consultation with HPC about this issue? Because compatibility with the historic district, that is important. So I think they might have some insight on this new amendment that I think should be considered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitch. Anybody else on the call that wishes to speak?
No one else has raised their hand.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Um I yeah, I will, I will um reiterate something that Mr. Fitch mentioned. And this is a zoning text amendment, and there was a specific piece of property mentioned. Um we really can't take that into consideration. This is.
So that actually, I clarified um zoning map amendments. You cannot speak specifically to.
A project.
Project, but zoning text amendments, it does not have that prohibition.
Okay, okay. But this would affect other properties other than the the two that were mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Little block.
But now there was a property mentioned in the presentation by the applicant that's in the high one. The old Coca-Cola bottling facility. So that is that just disregard that that really.
Would not be impacted by.
Right.
This, but he was just giving some insights of his level of investment.
So it's C two MSD out of the historic depot district only that we're talking about here.
Yeah, this does specifically apply to the C two zoning.
But it also sounded like perhaps the applicant was not in favor of the the street level fifty percent retail requirement south of Beach Street. How do we, you know, where the where the old city tire used to be for amazing pizza is now or? How do we feel about that?
I still like what we came up with. Two weeks ago.
I do, yes.
I like that retail component or commercial component anyway.
You need both.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, I agree. I was throwing that out there.
Appreciate it.
So for you guys who consider this a committee, the the first thing that comes to my mind is that having attended the Seventh Avenue branding meetings and the visioning meetings, I have never once heard a desire to recruit hip hipsters to the Seventh Avenue District. I've never heard that from anybody involved in the process, not once. And that being a stated goal of of this applicant, is that, you know, is that in conflict with everything else the city is doing?
And choice of words. Our whole, our whole population, if you haven't noticed, has rated down age-wise. We have our seniors and a lot of us are dying off, whatever, but the whole population is much younger. The crew. And Seventh Avenue, if you go to White Duck, I go to Quail Bombs all the time. White Duck is packed and you look at the audience in the parking lot, younger, it's all.
It's not hipsters, no.
That's that's a bad choice of words.
Hipster research, disposable income.
Yeah.
Uh a lot of disposable income, which is not what the Seventh Avenue Visioning Project is is about.
No.
Um youth is part of it, but I I think I think the income disparity is a huge difference there. To to cross over it from from hippie to hipster is a big leap.
Bad choice of words. Yeah, I agree with Peter, bad choice of words by the applicant. California boy.
And honestly, I mean, if the places are for rent, anybody that qualifies according to whatever they're.
He's not gonna give them away cheap either. They're they're it's gonna, they're gonna be, not, let's say expensive, but they're gonna be above mainstream price wise for the rentals.
I agree. I think that's a problem.
You do?
Yes, I think it's a serious problem for the Seventh Avenue District.
You're talking about putting a police station there, cleaning it up, and all of a sudden, everybody can't afford to live there anymore. But I think property values are more, and all of a sudden, we gentrify the neighborhood.
If you.
The whole idea of any of the historic aspects of that district are gone as as soon as we start pushing the rents up.
Certainly will be an improvement, though.
Uh it's a matter of opinion.
So it's it's still dumpy.
So.
Sometimes it's still dumpy.
This is a a good conversation, and I can appreciate it. However, the zoning text amendment isn't a request, and we haven't addressed. Although counsel has asked us to begin looking at affordable housing um as a citywide issue. This is a request for multifamily, and currently, as relates to multifamily, we don't have any authority to say that an affordability component would need to be a part of it. So while I can appreciate what you're saying, the request is for a use, which is apartments, which we do allow in a lot of our more urban areas. And I and I guess that's what I would focus on. I think there there is a very legitimate conversation that needs to occur around affordable housing more broadly, whether it's specific to Seventh. I think we obviously all know that it's probably a citywide concern. Um so just trying to kinda steer us back towards the specific zoning text amendment.
Zoning text amendment, okay.
Right.
Ask you this then, so if indeed this zoning text amendment passes and we allow multifamily in the C two MSD out of the Depot Historic District, would those properties be developed by right? Or will there be conditional zoning attached to them such that we could place conditions about affordability?
Market's gonna determine.
Percentage of them being affordable at that point.
He's gonna put a ton of money into this area. And market, the market's gonna determine whether they're willing to pay what he's gonna ask. And if they say aren't, then he's gonna have to lower his his prices.
But will it be, will it just be developed by right? Or will there be?
An opportunity by right if we pass this. It will be by right, right?
No matter how many.
My mind is cart before the horse.
No matter how many.
So no, multifamily would still trigger C Z D at fifty units.
Okay. At how many units?
At fifty units and or fifty thousand square feet. Yeah, the these projects would not.
Right, they're not huge.
Those, those would be by right developments.
There's no opportunity to place any kind of condition on it about affordability or.
That's right.
Percentage of it being affordable.
That's correct, yeah.
I haven't seen that either.
So so did Matt just, I think Matt wanted to share something in regards to, you know, multifamily potentially. Y- y- you're pointing out that multifamily then in C two becomes a change of character. In some of these situations, there are existing multifamily, you know, legally uh established, non-conforming uses. Um this would, by making it a permitted use, open that up a little bit and would allow redevelopment of buildings within the district uh for multifamily uses. When we, I can speak to when it was introduced in the historic district, it was specifically to help and facilitate redevelopment of second floor. Um so you had upper floor properties that were vacant, um that owners were specifically asking about doing multifamily. And so as you're going into the C two, you know, one of the things that the legislative committee talked about was whether a zoning text amendment or rezoning was the more, you know, advisable way to go about this. Um and I think there's an argument for both of those. Um but uh the applicant's request, which we have to field a petition, um which is what this is, uh was to do a zoning text amendment. Uh so staff in looking that at that made some recommendations that, you know, multifamily, I think, does make sense. Mixed use in a commercial downtown district does make sense. Um that's, I think that's where staff stand. But yes, does it have the potential to start to change the character along that corridor? It it does. I I again, I would note that uh multifamily and residential are already present in the corridor. Um and new development can, you know, further contribute to that. And we're seeing new development in the Seventh Avenue corridor.
Yes, go ahead. So my issue is, if these were two projects, I would probably say yes. But now we're gonna say that every lot down Seventh can be developed the same way, by right. Um with with.
So every one of the, every one of those single-family homes in that one block stretch could be sold and developed this exact same way. Every single one of those vacant lots could be developed the same way. We didn't make it specific to exist in commercial buildings.
Yeah, it would be commercial below, residential above, but we're we're putting that fifty percent limitation, and that's for the entire.
Round.
Yeah, round floor. Like, not not in the historic, historic district, it has to be a hundred percent.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, I'm on board with that. But I I do have the same, some of the same concerns that that Fred does about.
I think my my concerns always come when we apply something broadly that is to a specific situation. Uh and that's what we're doing here. We're we're allowing redevelopment of every lot down the Seventh Avenue corridor at this standard. It doesn't apply to these two buildings.
But does does multifamily above retail make sense there?
It may.
Yeah, cause I I'll just point out, I know you guys know this, but obviously, all of those lots are permitted under the current C two zoning standard to do a whole bunch of things. And I would note that C two is probably one of our more intense zoning districts. And it allows, you know, everything from light manufacturing to all all sorts of commercial uses. So the 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 those 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 elements really, yes, those those residential houses could be bought today and they could be redeveloped under our C two standards, which don't have any design standards, don't have any, you know. We're getting into some of the things that as staff, we've talked about quite a bit, you know, that we would like to put some additional time and energy into. Uh but, you know, in the meantime, we we kind of work with what we have. And so the redevelopment is possible today and could occur under the C two. This would be adding multifamily, and whether or not that's an appropriate additional use, I think, is what I would highlight.
Yeah, I'll just add that the comp plan with this being downtown core and downtown support suggests that it is compatible for multifamily and live-work units. And so those are, you know, primary recommended land uses uh within our comprehensive plan, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Have a motion to approve or deny?
Yeah, I'll I'll recommend approval. I'm a planning board recommend city council adopt an ordinance amending the official city, official city of Hendersonville zoning ordinance. Uh article sixteen sixteen uh supplementary standards for certain uses. Section sixteen dash four dash twenty-four residential dwelling, common multifamily with the modifications of the, to the petition as presented by staff based on the following. Number one, petition is found to be consistent with the city of Hendersonville twenty thirty comprehensive plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because future land use designations of downtown core and downtown support all for recommended land uses and design guidelines that align with the proposed zoning text amendment. Number two, we find, we find this petition to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because, one, the addition of multifamily residential as a permitted use will allow for greater infill development in the zoning dis- district with a mix of intense land uses. Number two, the addition of multifamily residential as a permitted use will place more residents within close proximity to goods and services. Number three, the addition of multifamily residential as a permitted use will provide for a variety of housing types as different price, at different price points. Number four, the reduction of setbacks will allow for more efficient use of land and provide more opportunities for infill development. Number five, the provisions maintaining non-residential uses along frontages on Seventh Avenue will support a vibrant mixed-use district as redevelopment occurs along the court.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Can we just go back to all the the staff recommended changes that we're voting on again, just so we can review them? Can we just review the staff recommended actual changes to the zoning? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Why don't you get a second?
Yeah, let's get a second on that, yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay.
What was that?
That's exactly what I wanted to see, right?
Okay. Did the motion state?
Yes.
Anybody say?
Yes.
And it was seconded by Neil?
It was. So we're gonna scratch the depot national and just make it the MSD. We're gonna scratch second floor, make it upper floors. Yep, and then any building outside of the historic district shall primarily reserve, shall, shall, not must, shall. Is that different than should? Most, okay. Okay, okay, primarily, shall primarily, but then why, then why is the word primarily? Shall reserve ground floor section? All right. Okay, access points, ground floor residential dwellings may front upon an alley or a private, non-street public space under the following circumstances, but you don't want them dumping out onto the street, is that what you're saying? Okay. The residential access.
Not front.
And not front. Right. Got you. But but obviously, the the retail space could, yes, okay. Just making sure.
It'd be no front of the building.
Okay, I'm I'm I've got it now. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything in there that. You want to vote? Yeah, well, yeah, let's take a vote. Um all in favor?
We'll discuss first.
Oh, any discussion? There you go, sorry.
So my last point, when somebody tells you what they believe and what they intend to do, you should believe them. Mr. Mock directly stated, he intends to change the character of this district, and I don't support that. It's that simple. He stated that is his sole intention is to change the character of this district.
But this is a, this is a zoning.
I don't care if it's uh, it's not in accordance with what the district's trying to do.
How would you change the zoning to allow residential without?
I'd I'd be more than willing to entertain a C Z D to put these two buildings in. But to to let this apply to all developers all the time and all the lots in this zone. And all the lots in this zone. I don't, I don't.
So you don't see Seventh Avenue with retail below and residential above. Fronting the street.
I could.
But it matters to you who lives in it. And I don't think that's something that this board.
Can do at this stage, that's why I don't wanna change it. We cannot put any restrictions on it.
And we'll never have the opportunity to do that.
We'll see.
I mean, I.
I'll get to council meeting.
I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, and. Hopefully, when city council reads the minutes, you know, from this this meeting, you know, they'll see your point. Okay, any other discussion?
Go ahead, Fred.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five to one. We have a presentation on. Our proposals for the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan, but we sent out. A request for proposals, we got back six proposal, correct? Five proposal. And Lou is gonna give us an update on those.
Yeah, I mean, we we've been at this for a while, and we don't have a ton to update you on. What I will just note is that we did receive five, all five addressed all of the aspects of the proposal, and so are all qualified for review, which is currently what staff are doing. We'll be working with the long-term.
Long range.
Long-range committee. To engage some of those as we move through the review process. And our goal is to move towards council. Approval of a planning board recommended consultant as we move into the next couple of months, so. Short short timeframe might be October, longer timeframe might be November that we'd be getting council approval.
Anticipated timeline would be this week, staff with some other departments are reviewing. These five proposals, we're scoring them, we have a scoring sheet. We're gonna whittle that down to the top one or two candidates, those that really distinguish themselves, then share those proposals with the long-range committee. Have that committee score those. Have a meeting with our staff. Internal team, really try to whittle it down to to one recommendation combining, but the committee's. Thoughts and staff's thoughts, present that one top recommendation to planning board at next month's meeting. And then from there, carry it forward to city council for their support. And then kick this thing off and get going. Like that easy.
Uh, that is it, so we move to adjourn.
So moves.